Forum, so if you would please respond to the city clerk as she calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Present.
Alderman Sistrum.
Present.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Y'all hear that?
Here.
All right, we do have a forum, everyone is in attendance, so what we will do first is call a meeting to order. This is the recess meeting of June 16th. We will stand for the pledge allegiance, followed by an invocation from Alderman Vaughn and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For God of creation, who give life, Father, by the Lord, who gave Jesus Christ, Almighty, who alive, oh no, and oh power, oh fear, and oh evil, all understanding, and all. Father God, again, here's a few of handmaids too. The American and the born, oh no, and oh, we're probably here in the north. As you Elijah, I need to watch you all day long, Father God. Allow your Holy Spirit to bring us back to this upon a place we want to say thank you. We thank you for your grace and mercy, for most of all, and thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, out of the world, out of being, out of salvation. Father, we just thank you for what you allowed this man, who achieved up to this far. We thank you for being with us. We pray now, Father God, because we see all the things that are going on around us. Corona plague is still on, and all the reason we pray, it is just to stay a standing so far. But we realize that in any other God, it still could happen, no God, that even you, all things were said. Father, we said, you said all these things will come, but he ain't seen yet. We pray, Father God, that you would bless each one of us to look in the mirror at ourself. Because there's not only five of a man who do this, with five things would come out. The Father, with his twenty men, that you blessed us tonight, to make good wise and sound, and for you said, most of all, for this community, most of all, for around the world. Father, that we would be able to look at ourself and say, I done all that I can do to do the right thing. There's so many ways you can do wrong, but there's not the one way to do right. And Father God, that's all you've said in our life, during the life of us. Lord, we teach us to love one another, you know what? Despite of all our differences, as you say, Lord, we say thank you. We thank you for the moment, but right now, we thank you to right now. Even in the engineering, or the, or the, and our decision, that Jesus said.
All right. Thank you all for being here, we appreciate it. Our first order of business is to approve the official agenda with the consented items. Do we have any changes, and I will be calling, because we have people on telephone and on Zoom, we will be calling on roll call votes for everything we do. And I will make sure that I touch base with every alderman as we work our way through the agenda. So first, first I will ask Alderman Carver, do you have any changes you wish to make to the official agenda or the consented items?
No ma'am, that's my ask, is that a, just a recommendation, that's not city policy, is it?
No, no, it is a strong recommendation.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely feel comfortable in the environment, not for my.
Okay.
It's okay.
Yes, sir. Alderman Sistrum, any changes to the agenda with the consented items?
No ma'am.
Alderman Little, any changes?
No ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am.
And Alderman Vaughn?
Okay.
All right, seeing no changes to the agenda as it's written with the consented items, I would suggest a motion for approval.
I move.
A motion from Alderman Carver to approve the agenda as it is written with the consented items, so I have a second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. All right, there's no further discussion, if you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, the approval, the agenda with consented items is approved, and I will read the consented items now. First is consideration of the minutes of the May 19th, 2020 meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen in the city of Starkville. Second is consideration of the minutes of the May 29th, 2020 work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. And under engineering, we have consideration of authorization to advertise for construction bids for the linkage tap project, Spring Street sidewalk, and authorization for the mayor to sign any M dot required paperwork. Under finance administration, we have acceptance of the May 2020 financial statement. Under fire department, we have request permission to host the Mississippi Fire Chiefs Conference at the mill, January 11th through 13th, 2021, with some advance deposits to be reimbursed by registration fees. This will be at no cost to the city. Under parks, we have request approval for updates to parks, recreation facility use agreement, and tournament use agreement, to include COVID-19 guidelines. And under utilities, we have request authorization for econ construction to complete the driveway repair at 1085 Stark Road, the lowest of two quotes in the amount of $6,200. And then we have a request authorization for Starkville Utilities to initiate task order number five with Garber LLC for the construction services related to the Green Oaks water and sewer rehabilitation in the amount of $135,700. And that concludes the consented items. My pleasures, thank you. All right, and next on our agenda is mayor's comments, and I do have several things, or at least a couple of things, that I want to, I want to mention tonight. First, let me say that our march, our protest march, as it were, for the city of Starkville, we should all be very proud. It was a, it was a very peaceful event. It was a combination of effort between the city of Starkville and MSU and the protesters, and I commend our police department and our fire department for assisting and making sure that it was handled very professionally. So I was extremely proud of both our city, as well as MSU, and our partnership in making sure that that went well. So for those of us who were not in, for those who were not in attendance, I'm, I'm hopeful that you all saw the, saw the news and saw how well it reflected on Starkville. So, and we actually made national news as well, so. I said, what do we have, what's going on ma'am? Okay, all right, I'm sorry, let me, let me go ahead and continue. And, and now I've got some acknowledgements of people who have worked very hard. Ms. Creaseink of the United Way has asked me to recognize and show the, show the appreciation to these individuals, of the organizations that I'm going to read out, who have been instrumental in helping our community get through this COVID-19, and supporting our community, the volunteers, providing any number of services to help our more vulnerable in the population make it through the times that we've been through over the last three months. So I'm going to read out this list, and at the end of that, I, I think we all are going to have to give a round of applause to y'all and to yourselves as we do this. So first, we have Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, Ricky Howard. We have Bullies Pantry and Closet, Montelio Hobley. We have Casserole Kitchen, Lauren Zimmerman. Christian World Mission, Leanne Williams. Compassion Food Pantry, Church of God, Max Keen. Calvary Baptist Church, Grant Arrender. God's Warehouse, Mallory and Amanda Ware. Josie Creek Church, James Turner. Mount Theodor Baptist Church, Latasha Harris. Peter's Rock Temple, Betty J. Young. Rock Hill Methodist Pantry and Clothes Closet, Donna Poe. St. Joseph Catholic Church Food Pantry, Joe Schmidt. Starkville Salvation Army, Bethany Westaby. And we also have the Area Office on Aging, providing seniors meals, delivered as Bobby Gan. And so all these folks have been instrumental in making sure that those who are more vulnerable in our community have been served and served well, and I want to personally thank you, and I know this board does too, so. Those ladies I called out, do we, I see a couple in the audience, who else, who else, would you stand up? Stand up for us, please? Thank y'all so much for what you continue to do, what you have done and what you continue to do, so. And then, next item I have is also something of which we can be incredibly proud, and this is, this is the fire department, and I'm going to give a little bit of a written narrative here. Starkville Fire Department was dispatched to victims stuck in the trench at the construction site between Lynn Lane and Academy Road. I think we all remember when that happened. E4 was the first on the scene. Upon initial approach of the scene, they discovered two, two victims trapped by a very large boulder in eight by 10 foot trench. The boulder was estimated to be approximately 21 feet long, five feet tall, and weighed around 30,000 pounds. The first victim they encountered was very strongly believed to be deceased, with obvious grave bodily harm, along with very significant damage to the head. He was pinned between the wall of the trench and a large boulder that broke away from the wall, sliding into the trench and pinning him. The fire department noticed that they had a second victim who was alive, but pinned to about his waist by the same boulder. Even though they didn't have the necessary tools and safety equipment, they began the rescue. They entered the trench and started that rescue. They began to better assess the measure that they would need to take, to free that patient. At the time, four, the fire and rescue were called to bring the necessary tools and equipment to safely secure the trench. Once the trench was secured, they were able to get down into the trench and really begin to break and move the rock that was pinning the patient. The Starkville Street Department provided a jackhammer, which they used to remove most of the rock. The Starkville Fire Department and a member of the Columbus Fire and Rescue also used picks, sledgehammers, and smaller hammers to remove other smaller parts around the victim. After approximately three hours, three hours, y'all, the patient was freed by several rotating crews. The patient was loaded onto a helicopter and flown to Tupelo for further treatment of the injuries. Sadly, he died en route to the hospital. After the first patient was removed, the fire department had a small briefing, and they turned their attention to the deceased victim for body recovery. After four hours, they were finally able to remove the second victim. And although there were two deaths, this was a successful operation because there were no further injuries to the rescue personnel, and the danger of that trench was enormous. And so we are all grateful that y'all came out of that unscathed. The fire department and the city of Starkville would like to thank the numerous personnel who placed their lives on the line during this dangerous and extensive rescue and recovery. We would like to present the following personnel members with a service above self award. I'm going to take my mask off to say that, because I didn't say that well, the service above self award. The members of the SFD include, and the chief is going to pass out the, the awards. Battalion Chief Andy Sharp. Training Chief Clarence Parks. Fire Marshal Mark McCurdy. Lieutenant Brian Arnett. Lieutenant Jonathan Wade. Lieutenant Chance Cummings. Lieutenant Justin Edwards. Lieutenant Jason Williams. Sergeant Matthew Shover. Sergeant Nathan Herndon. Sergeant Tyler Davis. Sergeant Edwin Suggs. Sergeant Paramedic Jeremy Weaver. Firefighter Joseph Diaz. Firefighter Michael Edwards. Firefighter Nicholas Pearson. Firefighter Josh Kennedy. Firefighter Blake Wilson. Firefighter Elliot Johnson. Fire Chief Charles Yarborough, hand yourself one, chief. And Nicholas Shoemaker. There we go. We would also like to recognize the following personnel with this same award. Police Chief Mark Ballard and the Starkville Police Department. The Columbus Fire and Rescue. Do we have Columbus Fire and Rescue here, chief?
No.
Okay. Chris Black, is Chris here? No? And Papert EMS, do we have any Papert EMS folks? Okay, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like you to cast your eyes along this wall, because these are some of these folks who did yeoman's work, hard work. Service above self is the least we can do, and thank you so much for all you did. I know that was a very tough, that was a tough situation, and y'all executed it with, obviously professionalism and a great deal of passion, so thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time to be here with us so that we can say thank you. Yes, ma'am. Uh oh. You want me to call, vice mayor? Oh, he's calling, vice mayor, back, okay. Is that who we lost?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Michael, I don't know what happened, thank you.
All right, I'm so sorry we lost you, vice mayor.
That's okay, I'm here, we're good, thank you.
Okay, did you, did you hear what we were doing?
Well, I was there at the com, I was there at the comment section, that's the last of hurry.
Okay, all right, we were, we were acknowledging the firefighters, and they were all lined up against the wall, so.
I heard, I heard that. Heard that, great, mayor, thank you.
Glad you're back, thank you. All right, do we have any board of aldermen comments?
I got a couple.
Okay, Alderman Carver?
First of all, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and ladies, just on that. Second, also, thank you to Mr. Chris Camp, and her office, and I'll want to, and look, they have done the last couple of months, and how they've stepped up, and just some collaboration and relationship between their office, the county, and the city. So thank you for the young and old office, and all that they've done. Second, or, yeah, secondly, the setup tax figures coming in, and I would say that they were more promising than expected. And I would, if anything, and I would get back to at least a two, and to get the furrows and bullies back, I think it's time for that. I got rings on, I know, and that, 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 efficient for this, but I'd say, I guess, most of our, I don't want to complain to get back to twice a week garbage pickup, from Penitentiary San Antonio, Texas, San Antonio, I think anybody out there. I feel eighteen phone calls, emails, and texts, that at least gets them back to a regular garbage pickup. Third, there's a group that Mr. Camp's been working with in Green Oaks, that speeding, somebody crawling in Green Oaks, seven vehicles. So last night, and tonight, and tomorrow night, there's a group from 5:00 to 7:00, that's been on next door, and they're trying to meet eighty percent of those, a few that live in Green Oaks. And if you want to get out of town, that's going to be helping that group, that's going to be citizen, but there's a four that has to get out of the door, so. They're going to be at Paycheck Park, today is Tuesday, and then tomorrow night, from 5:00 until 7:00. And I guess, well, that's it. Let my pen and pen, and my insurance officer, your special retirement officer, we'll talk about it.
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you. Alderman Sistrum?
Nothing from me, mayor.
Okay, Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am.
And Alderman Vaughn?
I have one, ma'am, thank you so much.
Yes.
Time, and most my phone, um, come over, move the bathroom, back to the park. And we can get some, like, twenty, so they can, that's big, I guess.
Okay, all right, thank you. All righty, now it's time for citizen comments. This is the time when we have citizens, they are allowed three minutes to come tell us whatever it is that is on their mind, and any concerns that they have, and we generally do not respond, but we take note, and then hopefully, if we can address what the issue is, we will do so at some point in time, so. Mr. Turner?
Uh, I agree with the mayor, man, that's the kind of war, that was. Uh, I would give a mayor, give forty feet, give five feet, and I'm a member of the United States. Uh, I want to thank the mayor and the police chief, uh, getting the family through, uh, mother home going. Uh, it was peaceful, uh, quiet, and that, that helped assist the engine. Um, we got one more, uh, situation, in, uh, that's bad, if my knee, I, I called the mayor and the police chief, and that is the death of my brother, which would be on 4th July. And, uh, my knee can give me through that, then I'll be calling. Uh, because now, um, 455060, uh, my mother was a candidate. Uh, and, and again, the chief, uh, with all this that's going on here, kids, when they was they home back up. Uh, yes, we only, and if they weren't in that police, they could have seen it. And we'll try to keep some of this address out of, out of here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? I don't think I said it, but if you would state your name, please, ma'am.
I am Paul.
Thanks, ma'am.
And I live on Ring Street, I've been there since 1991. And my issue is with giving individual homeowners a no parking spot. That's not fair to everybody on that street that pays taxes, because there's parking in front of everybody's house on the street. And I'm the oldest resident on that street as of now, because my neighbor has, has backed away and wasn't there. And we used to have parking on both sides, which they took it away from us. On one side, and right now, there's not a problem, but when school starts back up, and we have all these car things coming, there's going to be a problem. And I'm not able, since we walk a long distance, I've got nagging knees, I've got handicap tags, I've only got one spot where I can park at, in front of my house, that I had to put there myself, because it wasn't available to me when I purchased my home. And I've been told I should have checked that out before I bought my home. I could say the same thing for the lady who doesn't want to see a car parked in front of her own house. She should have thought about that before she moved in on Public Street. Because that's what is the public street, and I don't think she'd be right, and she'll hurt favoritism, and nobody else.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Saunders.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close citizen comments, we have no public appearances tonight, we have no public hearing tonight. We do have, under mayor's business, item, the first item up is consideration of calling for the first public hearing on adopting a temporary leader and entertainment district ordinance for the city of Starkville. This is, has been in the past referred to as a go cup ordinance, and there have been several cities around the state that have adopted them on a temporary basis, that is hopefully helpful to the restaurants during the time of COVID, and the times when restaurants are, were shut down, and they're now open at only 50% capacity. This is to allow them further options as to how they can be more, more successful and weather this particular storm. So that is, in essence, what this is about, and this is not the ordinance itself at this point in time, this is simply calling for the first public hearing on it. If we follow our pattern, and this is approved this evening, then we will have our first public hearing, the first meeting in July. That second meeting in July would be the second public hearing, at which point in time that ordinance would be subject to potential adoption. So, having said that, I will seek any information or any comments from other board members. Alderman Carver, we'll start with you. We may start at the other end of the table in a few minutes, instead of we keep going, starting one, but we will start with Alderman Carver?
No, my question just to start with the holiday that's, uh, next week, we're going to be Tuesday, it's.
It'll be the seventh. The fourth is on a Saturday, so the next one will be the seventh. This is a long month, this is a three week month.
A month.
Okay. Alderman Sistrum?
No comments.
Okay. Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No ma'am, and I would make a motion for approval.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, I'm second.
Okay, I'm the second from Alderman Beatty. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, mayor.
Okay, and Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am.
All right, so we have no discussion associated with it, I have a motion in a second. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, a vote of six to one, the motion carries, thank you. Second item, and this is not, is not very specific, because it is sort of a work in progress, but we, at our work session, we had this, a concept that was provided to us. It's a consideration of tactical urbanism to create a downtown streetery. Again, this is to assist our restaurants to find, during this time when they have to be at 50% capacity and have to be spaced, this is an opportunity to create sort of a sidewalk cafe. We are not, we're not taking up any of the street, but we are taking up some parking. And this is in front of the board, because obviously parking on Main Street has always been a discussion point. But before I brought it forward, I touched base with the restaurants in front, in whom, in front of whom it would be situated. I touched base with the Main Street Board, and they were supportive of it, particularly during this time. And so this has the blessing and the letters should be in our e packet from Main Street and the partnership, as well as from the Eat, not Eat, the Eat Local Group. So Ty Tims, in particular, out of Restaurant Tyler. So those things are available, is conceptual right now, we are looking at how we would go about that. Edward and Leah Kemp are looking at it from an engineering standpoint, and from a tall towns, a tall, small town center standpoint, to see how we would create that, and it is fairly inexpensive, and I'm looking at a GoFundMe opportunity here. So that's, that's what this is about, and so now, anyone who wishes to have comments, I see your hand, Mr. Carver, so we'll start with you and work our way down.
Yeah, I was just briefly thinking, you know, I get my own two concerns, I'm, I think it's a good idea, I think it works, I think, given the current situation with student capacity, that would maybe allow some restaurants to reach full business potential, and turn macro investment. Uh, the only thing I would say is when you start putting the best in the street, street, make sure that it's in a bottom tight situation, or they're protected, from the gas station, and when these, that much on terrorists, or working in this scenario, or maybe just a parking lot, that. I know that there are three major design options, from tinder block to wood, type, and then they rang from a thousand, five thousand, I think, under some, quote, next from reading, uh, yesterday, but good to protect those, uh, the patients, you know, and I don't know, it's hard. We've got a great dollar system, we're talking about concrete structure, and a big crowds downtown, and something like that, just any safety. Well, I think it's, uh, this is what we talked about, being a little movement, like, you know, and just do business, and they have to change every time. I think it's confirmation, right, I've read a couple articles, that people are more comfortable, uh, obviously, even outside. Yeah, I think I'm on board for it, but I just want to know that our package protects the best part of the.
Absolutely, and we'll bring it back for, for a final design, and we'll do that after the first meeting in July. Alderman Sistrum?
I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to support our businesses in a, a time that's difficult, and. I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to support our businesses in a, a, a time that's difficult, and, and I'm, I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this. And I would say you can sign me up as your first GoFundMe member.
Okay, thank you. All right, Alderman Little?
Uh, I like the concept as well, um, sitting on the Main Street Association Board, we've discussed this, and see it also as an opportunity to, for the, uh, each restaurant to expand their seating capacity under this COVID fifty percent requirement, seating requirement, and, uh, enable and turn more tables and hopefully increase their revenue, and it's just twofold, it helps the city at the same time on sales tax, uh, collection, so, um, I'll, I'll be supporting this going forward.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Walker?
Uh, yes, mayor, I'm in support of this, uh, as moving forward with a conceptual idea, and I make a motion for approval.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, I fully support this comment, and I will second your motion.
All right, we've got another opportunity there, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comment, mayor.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Vaughn?
Now, would you be just temporary during COVID, or will we come back and revisit it again after COVID?
Well, we, it is intended to be temporary, but one of the things I have always wanted to do is us have some sort of, some sort of opportunity for outside eating downtown, but we will clearly come back and revisit it. But for the time being, it's temporary based on an allowance for the restaurants to try to, um, have an offering that gives them, uh, competitive, uh, opportunity during this time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, I have a motion in a second, and no further discussion, all those in favor, if you would, respond yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you all. I love it when we do creative and do things, so I'm excited about that. Uh, the third item is consideration of adoption of a person in the permit process allowing for marches and protests. This is, uh, something that, uh, after we had our, um, concerns and difficulties with having to march from two weekends ago, or a weekend before last, not be able to meet our special event permit request or, or requirements, um, I started doing some research, and one of the things that we need to be able to do is to be, um, responsive to things that are national and spontaneous, and not create a situation where they have difficulty holding these events. And, and insurance policy at that time was, if not extremely difficult, almost impossible, I think probably impossible is a better way to, to phrase that because I don't think anyone could have gotten any insurance for a march of that nature. So, having researched it, and I'm sure Mr. Latimer can speak to it better than I, but there is, uh, an inability for a city to impede, um, through things like insurance, a First Amendment expression of a march, a protest, um, free speech and the right of assembly. So there was such a thing that I, I found on the internet, you know, I always love the internet, it's a, you know, you Google it and then something will pop up. And that, while they called it a free speech permit, I think of it more of a First Amendment permit, so that's kind of how I had it formed. Um, this allows for what happened to us, uh, last weekend before last, to happen with much less difficulty. This creates an opportunity for the, the supporters, the marchers, the organizers to come to the city. Um, we have, uh, a, a date of like seven days out without an insurance requirement, but just to allow us to understand what's going on so that our police department, our fire department can better respond and protect those who are going to be participating in such an event. So that is what is in front of the board now. Um, and, uh, Mr. Latimer has looked at it, Mr. Latimer, you have any comments from a city attorney perspective or First Amendment perspective?
No ma'am, other than, uh, much credit to Daniel Hadlin for taking the first draft at it, and I understand he looked at ordinances from Washington DC and Chicago and other big cities, how they handled it, and much of that language is in this, uh, this draft, and I think it checks out for the law.
From your standpoint, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I might have that first question, what changed this versus what we already had, I mean, what are the top two that we did to take away from it?
Uh, we, we had an insurance requirement, and according to the case law, we can't require insurance particularly for something that, that is like First Amendment expression. Yeah, we can still require insurance for an event, like, um, pumpkin plaza, for example, or for, you know, the, um, what else do we do, Bulldog Bash. You know, we can require insurance for those kinds of things, but not for this expression because it is considered an impediment to them being able to do that. Um, and, and that was, that was a major thing, the other thing is the, is the time difference, you know, it takes a while to get to the board. And so, from that perspective, this would allow that to be something that would come in a much shorter timeframe because it generally ends up being a response to net national things, or things going on, um, in, in the area that people feel compelled to do something with sooner than every two weeks when we meet.
Well, I guess, uh, say from Australian on our police and fire and custodial services and everything, somewhere, a group were coming in that was a violent group, and they said, hey, you know, folks, we're gonna have a, uh, a rally or protest on Friday. Um, I would say more of awareness, that knowing what it takes, not just I do, but any city to prepare for that. Um, what are the timelines and strengths for that? If, uh, they were coming in with everything, they know, gonna have rally tomorrow, uh, what, what kind of protection we got to city to make sure that we actively get prepared for that?
I can speak to that.
Go right here.
Looking at the text of the document, Alderman Carver, so the city can always put forth reasonable time, place, and then restrictions on free speech events. And one of the triggers for that is police department, uh, determines that if there's an imminent likelihood of violence, and if there is, then they can curtail that event to diminish that threat of violence.
What would be the threshold for requirements that you expect the law to be, uh, violent to the city? And one, if it's a, if it's a nation, or if it's a local group, wants to come in, they don't want to have a history of violence, so what are your threshold requirements, or what are you looking at to enable them to be, being prepared for it?
I think the city would be protected if its police chief made a finding of fact on the record, a formal recommendation to the city that there's an imminent likelihood of violence for a particular.
Okay, well, I, um, I would never came to vote on it, I would say, um, you know, my heart and soul, um, obviously, the protest needed to happen, I'm glad I had new speaker, but I didn't want to say, um, I told you privately, privately, it's also stupid, stupid. And, uh, but, uh, just thank you all for everything you did, because this was pretty, this was pretty quick, uh, rapid response. Like, you get ready, and that's a, that's a large crowd coming in, and, uh, thanks for all this, you know, I have to thank you so much, one thing, I thank you privately, one thing, but uh, I guess, I think Alderman, that's actually looking at Perkins that made the comments, you know, he started talking about the legal certification and things like that, so and I refute this privately, but like, let's just say, uh, something happened, whatever's damaged to a person's property, like, we did, and I asked, um, thanks to mayor, it reminds you, that we were gonna cut that border up like a funeral, and buy, and accompany, but like, who would take liability in that situation if something would have happened?
Yeah, it's highly fact intensive, and we talked to, uh, insurance agent William Hilton about that very same, that insurance meeting last week, talked about all the possibilities. What insurance would mean from applicant standpoint, what our insurance would particularly cover, and it just really depends on the fact of the case. But basically, in general, um, our liability insurance would, would not likely cover, like, for instance, a riot event or some other type of criminal activity, or when somebody got hurt, or somebody tried to plow through traffic to hit people with a car. That would all likely be excluded from our policy.
So, I would just, again, rely on the baller, like, protection, say, you know, anything comes down the lane through there, you see that big, I guess, um, and I'm not talking about any, any passing, talking about the day towards, and anytime you get a film of a larger crowd, things to be this, a particular pedestrian type situation, somebody trying to pick up the bag when in that life, you know, so, uh, you, you should bother, that's all we've got, um, you, you lie to just like we do to counter, you just for, uh, free speech, violence, and things like that, that is a protected area, and, and for me, this is, and pedestrian injury, injury, but, uh, yeah, that was one of the questions I had, I, I thought it was one of the things, right, um, I think, everybody has thought and organized, big schools, frontier, so, and, and fantastic environment, I personally. Uh, I, I don't really have a list to give this at all, along with the city training, and all the examples, anyway, for you, and, uh, I don't, I don't see anything else, and the rest of that, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Carver.
I have to, ma'am, yeah. And Alderman Carver, just to put a bow on it, so, the ball process is, the First Amendment allows it anyway, so what this policy does is just give some notice and structure to it, and allows us to organize it the best we can.
What, what are the time table, I mean, notice on day is we're gonna acquire, or that we need?
For a spontaneous event, and that, that is defined in the policy, uh, twenty-four hours, for any other march, seven days.
You feel like that, this is time, a spontaneous event, twenty-four hours, prayer? And maybe something that you need to prepare, you know, training and protocol for spontaneous like?
Yes, sir, Bureau, uh, speaking of state of national, uh, we're gonna continue to train for, for, uh, spontaneous, uh, we're probably a little off form with our training.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrum?
I'd, I'd like to say that, um, I appreciate Alderman Carver's, um, comments, and I'm very glad that we have the ballards and they're available for use at certain times. I, I think whether or not we use those would depend on how long we thought the street needed to be closed, and that would be part of what you would work through in, in approving this process. Um, to, to give him some comfort and maybe anybody else who's listening some comfort. The board can always weigh in, um, and with a special call meeting or, um, or a regular meeting, depending on the timing, and, um, have, have, have their voices heard if need be. But I think it's a great opportunity to allow us, um, a little more flexibility than we had before, and I think that that's, um, gonna be very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sistrum. Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty? Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Um, uh, if I have support for this, I need a motion.
I'll make such a motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Beatty, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Sistrum. All right, let's go to the other end of the table, if you would, please, answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you. And we will go, last but not least, as a part of this, we needed to, um, as part of the First Amendment permit, we needed to revise our special event permit policy. And in so doing, it removes the discussion of marches, processions, et cetera, from that in order to bring it current. But at the same time, it struck me, um, that there is an opportunity for us to allow for administrative. We tend to have seen a lot of special events, of which they are usually, um, supported by the board, I can't think of much that hasn't been. And so, there is an opportunity here for us to make that an administrative action, so that, um, with, with limits, and so my suggestion was the, the mayor has the opportunity to spend up to five thousand dollars without board approval. And so, I set that limit at five thousand dollars, so any, any in kind or any cost that would exceed five thousand dollars would need to come to the board. Or if, for some reason, the request for a special event permit got denied, it would need to come to the board. So, under those sets of circumstances, I thought that perhaps it might be time to create this as an administrative approval process. And so, that is what is before you as it relates to the special event permit policy. It includes the First Amendment permit, or it, it addresses the fact that we no longer need to, to address marches and processions. Um, and it brings into there the opportunity to do this as an administrative policy. So, um, from a discussion standpoint, Alderman Vaughn, we'll start with you. Okay? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comment, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, this is, take this out of the wording, or, or, or insert the wording under general rules and regulations, uh, where if it's a First Amendment type of event, this doesn't apply.
Yes, it, it takes the First Amendment piece of it out and lets it fall under the First Amendment permit policy. And this creates the opportunity for it to be administrative, other special event administrative, with the exception of those that would exceed five thousand dollars, or those that got denied. Bulldog Bash is an example of something that is well above five thousand dollars. Cotton Mr. Cars Festival will probably be another one, so it would, it would not, uh, cause those to, uh, not come before the board, but anything like a walker, a run, or something less expensive than five would come, would not come before, so. Thank you. Um, started that way, didn't it? Alderman, Alderman Walker?
Yes, ma'am, uh, just, I just want to clarify a couple points, if I might, I believe that this is a, a move that I'll be supportive of. Um, I think the way it currently reads that if, uh, a mayor denies a special event, then that group or whoever is bringing that special event forward would have the opportunity to go before the board, uh, to seek approval or to overturn that denial, is that correct?
That's correct.
The other thing that, that I see is, while there have been very few events that have, uh, not been approved by, by, uh, this and the previous board, more times than not, it seems that those approvals are, uh, fairly routine. Uh, in, in the fact that we're trying to create, uh, we want Starkville to be a place where events are being held, um, where there's opportunity for folks to go out and be in the community out and about, and spend their money, and all the things that make Starkville a, a good and fun place, uh, to be. So in that regard, I think it has a, a lot of merit to speed up the, the process, if you will. I think, though, one caveat that I would have is, I think in order, in terms of the timing of this, it, it certainly needs to be able to fall within that approval rating where that's, if it is an event that's going to be denied, that they have ample opportunity to be able to come before the board at a regularly scheduled board meeting, and based on the special event timing, I think that could be the case. I just think that that needs to be communicated very clearly with any person or group that is looking to hold a special event, uh, to make sure that if this is approved, that they have ample time before that event to be able to, if it's denied, to be able to come back before the board for approval.
Absolutely, and that's, that is an excellent point, and thank you for that, yes, um, that would, we need to make sure that that is the case. Um, I think from a timing standpoint, usually those special events are, are done, and I won't say we've got everybody trained, but we kind of have to get everybody used to coming, uh, well ahead of time in order to get an event approved, and so, um, I think we will, we will certainly do that, but we will also convey to them and make sure that those who hold events have got this new special event policy available to them, and we will add that, we will add that, uh, caveat with that, so thank you for highlighting that.
Yes, ma'am, and if I may make one more, uh, suggestion, while we're looking for this to be administrative, it's still going to be, uh, police chief, fire chief, sanitation, anyone else that would need to be, uh, involved from a staffing standpoint, would be giving their recommendations and blessing to whoever the mayor is at that point for approval or denial, is that correct?
Absolutely, we'll still hold that special event committee because that's that opportunity for everybody to talk about whatever that event is and the implications that are associated with it, so that part won't change.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and that that was, uh, uh, set, allowed in the meeting, thank you.
Thank you so much. And, and also, um, just to make sure everybody is aware of the sponsorship piece of that, if the, if the city wanted to sponsor the event, and with an advertised sponsor, that would require board approval, so that would be one of the caveats that's still in the, that is still in that special event policy, so. Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Sistrum?
Nothing, mayor.
Okay, thank you, and Alderman Carver?
No ma'am.
All right, um, so we have the consideration of that amendment, do I have a motion for saying?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Beatty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Alderman Little, a second from Alderman Little. All right, if you would, please, answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name, and we'll start with Alderman Vaughn again.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea. Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
All right, and it is unanimous, um.
I'm looking to make sure, but all the, all the, uh, I assume we're coming, where we seem to see them or not, what, that, even though we give you the approval to, to, to.
Are you, are you saying you'd like to know about them? Oh, sure, we'll, we will, we will make sure that you know about them.
Okay.
Okay.
In other words, we, we want, like, Alderman said, we want to be making a special call meeting, but I have no idea.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Um, all right, the next item under board business, the discussion consideration of the candidates for the Director of Parks and Recreation. We interviewed, um, two individuals on Friday, um, that were, um, very, very, very good candidates, and, um, after having a weekend to consider it. And, um, after having a weekend to consider it, um, I, I test, I discussed it with the board to see if anyone wanted to have individually with four, see if anyone wished to have, uh, another round of, um, discussion or another round of interviews. And I did not find that anyone did. And so, um, I wanted to put this on the agenda so that the board could, uh, take action if it's so desired or give direction, uh, whatever that might be. So, um, if you would, please, Alderman Carver, any thoughts from your perspective?
Well, just you and I speaking today and I'm waiting for a gentleman, um...
On board?
Um, not very emotional. I guess I'll probably defer that to, um, Alderman Sistrung from grave application. What y'all, I wouldn't have to walk, I wouldn't have to be at the meeting now, but walk to the meeting this weekend. Um, that, I'm waiting with, I'll probably defer somewhere else in the board that was there and make the, uh, emotion that they're entertaining, I would say.
Okay. All right. Alderman Sistrung?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I want to echo your comments that we had not only two good interviews, but we had a good pool of candidates from which we were able to pull those two good interviews. I appreciate, uh, both of them taking time to talk with us further, to, um, express their interest in our community, our parks, um, and the position that, that we're trying to fill. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Craig Dolan as our Director of Parks and Recreation effective August 1st with an annual salary of $80,000.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Sistrung that we appoint Craig Dolan as the, uh, new director for Parks and Recreation beginning August 1 at a salary of $80,000. Is that your motion?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Um... Alderman Little, that was, I heard, I heard a second from you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any, any discussion to go with that?
I would just say, yeah, the interview's Friday. Both candidates, Mr. Peters and Mr. Dolan, did an excellent job with their interviews. Um, were very confident and very competent. They, um, had impressive backgrounds and their resumes looked really good. And I think either candidate would, um, would be capable in doing a good job. Uh, I did lean toward Mr. Dolan in the fact that I liked his, um, uh, stability. He'd been at a couple of different city jobs for about six, seven, eight years. Uh, these last couple of jobs that had not moved around as much. So that's kind of what leaned me toward, toward him. So yes, that's where I'm at.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Little. Alderman Walker.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I'll echo what others have said. I, I certainly thought that, uh, both Mr. Peters and Mr. Dolan were, were good viable candidates for this position. And I was very pleased that the, the city is attracting quality, I would say, national candidates, but for certainly candidates that are in the southeast. That is, that is a far cry from where we have been and then very, and then not very distant past. So I think that is kudos to, uh, what people see in, in our parks and where we're trying to get to. And while I do believe both candidates would be very capable, uh, Mr. Dolan, I believe, i- is a better fit right now. And I base that on a couple factors. I think the, the advanced degree, I think, uh, Alderman Little spoke about longevity. Uh, it looks like he's been, uh, fairly stable and has clearly moved up the, the ranks. But, but the, the other piece of that that I think is important, and I think we've seen that from our previous, uh, department, most recent department head is that this person's a certified parks and recreation, uh, person and what that's been able to, what that meant for us in terms of grant writing ability and park organization and structure, um, leads me to believe that this person being a certified to be able to do that with his background, um, will be able to provide some stability and provide us a little bit of longevity. I certainly, uh, would be great if this person is, uh, a fine candidate that is here for the next 20 years. But if he gives us a good six or eight, um, and provides some good stability, I think that would be, uh, impressive. So, um, again, I thought both candidates were, were good. Um, but at this point, I'm, I'm a little bit more, uh, in line to, to agree that Mr. Dolan is maybe the best fit for Starville at this time.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty.
There are two extra candidates, two people that bring, I think, would, would have either, either candidate selected. Um, an outsider's perspective, which I think is a good thing, uh, to have somebody that's an outsider state of Mississippi that brings something, new ideas and things in. I still want to reiterate, and I, I, I'd asked both gentlemen yesterday or Saturday in the, the interview, that I want to see us strengthening some of our programs, like our, our possibilities for, uh, swimming. I would, uh, uh, I think that, and I know Alderman Vaughn talks about track programs and things, but that's, that's very important. But I guess you'd say non-traditional kind of parks recreation things, but, but we play a lot of ball, a lot of baseball, a lot of softball in Mississippi, kind of things. We start to play, uh, you know, soccer and stuff. But, uh, one of the reasons I think that we don't have collegiate swimming and diving in Mississippi, we just don't have high school programs. We just don't have places for people to swim. And I, I know that that's, those, those types of facilities and venues are expensive and they're, the, 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 to build, expensive to operate and stuff, but, but, uh, it's something I think that rounds out of, of, of recreation program and certain rural city we should be, should be thinking about something like that. Track also. Think, think, uh, sports that, that kids that don't want to play, uh, football, baseball, softball, participate in, uh, potentially, maybe that fosters and encourages that to happen throughout, you know, more in the state of Mississippi and finally some down the road, some women's, 60-year-old minutes are both up for in the swimming program, something like that. Probably that. You know, Arkansas and North Arkansas and the LSUs and all those places running us to build, we do it too. But, uh, with that said, I'll, I'll...
All right. Thank you, Alderman Beatty. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comment, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, ma'am. Both candidates are great. You know, Mr. Dolan, both of them had great, both of them had great ideas. Both of them been around. With me, it won't make a difference, but, um, Mr. Peters kind of stood out with his company. He's been experienced in track and field, saying you track and field was on their application. And but track and field mean a whole lot like, like Alderman Beatty. Track and field mean a whole lot to our kids, that he knows something about around us. Swimming, we never know what we're doing swimming, because we don't swim around here. And track and field, we don't run. So I just hope, you know, keep in mind and I hope that he do help us with touch our track and field for our kids to have something to do. Especially those who don't play football or basketball or baseball, you know, track and field mean a whole lot to us because we grew up running. We know how to run. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. All right. I have a motion and a second. And if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
It is unanimous. Thank you all. All right. Wonderful. Um, we have basically mooted the next event, uh, which was a special event request. So that has been made moot by our action prior to that. So they may proceed with that event. Um, then last but not least, we have a finance administration claim socket. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Little, a second from Alderman Little. Um, discussion, Alderman Carver. Alderman Sistrung.
Thank you.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am.
And Alderman?
No.
All right. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right. By vote of five to two, motion carries. That takes us through our regular agenda. We will now, uh, I need a motion to go into a closed determination session. I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn to go into a closed determination session to determine need for executive session. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Um, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver. Alderman Sistrung.
Thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right. It is unanimous. We will be going into a closed determination session. And if you would, please, uh, clear the room and we will do that. Is that it? Okay. The board has decided not to go into executive session. So we are now back in open session and we have a action taken or that will be taken by a board member depending on whether we can make the motion. And we have a, a motion directed by, uh, Attorney Latimer.
Based on the chief's recommendation and staff report, this proposed motion to me move to extend firefighter Calvin Waters for 48 hours with pay for violation of FFC... Without pay for violation of FFC policy 15.200 conduct unbecoming a firefighter and place him on six months probation.
Okay. That would be the motion. Do I have a, I, do I have a motion for the, uh, do I have approval of that motion or adoption of that motion? Alderman Vaughn? Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Um, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
All right. It is unanimous. Um, that takes us to an adjournment and I will make the announcement that we will not be having a work session. The Friday fire to our next board meeting is going to be a holiday, so, city holiday. So we will not be having a work session at that point in time. And this is a long month. So we will, it will be July the 7th before we meet again. So thank you all and we appreciate it. And we, uh, I need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Thanks.
Thank you. But second from Alderman Carver. If you would, answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Alderman.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right. We are in adjournment. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Y'all have a great rest of your...